I need one of those red light. He did it. He did the, oh. I can hear myself.
Your microphone has to be off too. There you go.
Did it go? No? How about now? It's not mine anymore, but there's something else. Yeah, I got, I got a little, I got all X's on my speakers muted. Is it you?
I don't think so. Let's be safe.
But it went away.
It went away. Oh.
It wasn't even in the meeting.
It was telling me.
I'm still not, it's still here. So, good evening, everybody. With the, the background noise. I am muted. That's muted and.
It is muted.
Volume is muted. So I don't know. Um, does anybody have? Trying to see if there's anything else in my bag. I can't imagine. Nothing else is turned on.
Volume's off on my phone.
And. That's muted. I really hate Zoom. Hate it. All the guests, speakers muted. I don't know what to tell you. Should I just get really far back?
I have speakers and headphones muted on this one.
Oh. So mine just says speakers muted and.
Speakers muted.
Is that Dell's computer good too? Is that off?
Yeah, this is from, it says speakers. We practiced with this one yesterday. Speakers and headphones.
He's talking about the desktop.
Is that off?
Desktop.
Let me go to settings and see if there's anything in here. We need one of those things for. System sound.
I can log in and see. Maybe that's the problem. Turn master volume down.
Just turn them down even though they're off.
To welcome everybody to our last hybrid meeting.
Is that what this is? This is the last one until? The dreaded variant Z. Managed sound devices, let's see. I'm disabling them. Failed to dete-, oh, I don't have speakers accorded. That's true. I actually don't.
No, this one's off. Yep, digital audio HDMI muted.
I'm turning off the mic. There's a microphone on this one. I'm not turning off the microphone. This is very annoying. I, I don't see any other options. For sound. Is it something people can, oh, this just went back on, but. Freaking out because there's something else on.
Nope, that's good.
No.
Right, I don't want to.
Right.
I just go, I don't care. So, I don't think it's me. Unless somebody wants, I mean.
It sounds better at the moment.
It does sound better. I think it's because he's messing with the.
Oh, he's not touching anything.
Alright, so I'll just.
Push forward.
I'll just, yeah, I'll press them on. People don't really need to hear me anyway. So, this is really our last Zoom?
I don't know that. I was just saying, it's the best way to fix this.
I was, yeah, or sledgehammer. Good evening. In case you couldn't tell, we're still using Zoom to somewhat of a degree. Thanks to the pandemic and the governor's orders that are mass generalized, chapter. I don't know, something. We all know it and. Pursue it to those general orders. It is still considered an open meeting even if you are remote. So, welcome. And with that, I guess we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance after which while someone else is talking, I'm gonna continue to monkey around with my laptop. So, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Blythe, if you want to take us through what we can look forward to tonight, other than my beating my laptop out a window.
Yes, so we're starting off with a public hearing regarding a transfer of the wine and malt beverage license for Ann's Market. After that, we're gonna discuss COVID updates and have public comment. The action items tonight include appointments of various boards and committees. To consider the award of two contracts, one for the fire station owners project manager and the second one for independent audit services. Following that, we want to open a warrant for the 2021 fall special town meeting. To then consider exercising the town's right of first refusal for some property located on the assessors map six, block one, lots five and seven. We have an item to consider the performance evaluation of the town administrator. To then consider a request from the garden club for a rededication ceremony of the veterans gardens at the cemetery in mid-September. And approval of a contract with GATRA for transit services for the elderly and disabled. The two action items are to consider board correspondence and town administrator updates. We have thirteen warrants to be approved and one set of minutes to be approved.
Thank you. As a quick aside, I don't know, two things. I discovered that while all my microphones had been subdued, there was not my microphones, the speakers, there was a microphone. That was still hiding in the background. I beat it into submission, which I suspect might impact the recording. But it seems to have done the trick with respect to the audio, so. So there it is. People can see our hands on the recording. They may not be able to hear. They can play it with the YouTube. So I feel much better about that. So, Blythe, I think it's back over to you.
Yes, so the first item on the agenda is a public hearing for the transfer of this wine and malt beverage license. We have in the audience, the, the new potential owners. Krista and, excuse my double checking. Krista and Todd Wigan, their attorney, I believe, and the former, the outgoing owner of the, of the property, Mr. Heedley. And I see Mr. DePlacido, who is the landlord for the, for that development on your screen as part of the Zoom meeting. So the first thing the board should do is to read the notice that's printed in your background memo and open the hearing. And you'll probably want to take. Input from, from the attorney and the parties present and then public comment if there is any about the actual transfer before closing the hearing. So it's on the first page of the agenda background in this middle, public hearing notice, liquor license.
I could do that if you want.
Yeah.
Question though, I mean, maybe it's in the. Notice. But I don't see a motion to open the meeting. Is it just, is it? The motion to close it. Need the board vote to close the public hearing?
Once you've heard the testimony and decide to close it before you vote on it.
I understand that. Do I need to move to open the meeting?
I think you can do that by reading the notice.
Okay, that's all I was wondering was just reading the notice qualifies opening it. Alright, then there you go.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given that under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, chapter 138, a public hearing will be held on July 20th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. On an application submitted by OT Crew Incorporated, Krista M. Wigan. The applicant seeks to transfer a wine and malt beverage license not to be consumed on the premises for Ann's Market Norfolk, 65 Holbrook Street, Norfolk, Mass. Current manager is Wayne A. Heedley. This hearing will be held in room 124, Town Hall, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass.
The Norfolk Select Board.
You can read, you can read, you don't think you need to read the names?
Alright, so. Since that is done, is there anything more that we need to know before opening it to the folks to give us information? Is there anything?
No, I think every, all the, everything that is required is in your packet and their application.
Yep.
Nancy Langlois has, who handles our licensing, has been through it. I know she's been back and forth with the attorney to make sure all the paperwork's correct and it's in order. And so the, where the process goes with this is that the ABCC has the forms they require and all the documentation. Board reviews that, takes comment, decides whether or not they, as a local authority, would grant it. And then if you do, we send it back off to the ABCC. They have their action. That can take a little while and then it comes back to the board for, to actually sign the license.
And I will admit that I saw the packet of information and I scanned it, so I knew what the heck. Who was looking for what, but I also very much decided that I was going to trust Nancy and whomever else was responsible for making sure that all of the forms were correct. And as such, before anybody has any questions, is there anything that? The applicants want to say at first, or they just want to answer any questions that the board may have?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Andrew Cannon along with Nick Rosini on behalf of OT Crew Inc., which is Todd and Krista Wigan who are here with us today. Also joined by Waylor Management, the current holder of the license. So we would like to just briefly give you the, as you know, the application. It's extremely thorough. But Todd and Krista live at 330 Main Street in Norfolk. They have three girls in the public school system, ages 14, 13, and 10. Two of them are behind Freeman Kennedy School right now playing softball. So they are embedded in Norfolk. They're, they're part of the community. It's a great opportunity for local residents to invest in Norfolk and to, you know, to keep Ann's Market right here locally. So, you know, it's not someone coming from outside. They really, you know, have a vested interest in making Ann succeed and to, you know, running a solid outfit. And so, you know, with that, just to give you a little understanding of who they are, where they come from, we're happy to answer any questions that either the board or the public may have. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no questions. It seems pretty straightforward to me. And Nina?
I do not have any questions.
Uh, no questions on mine.
So with nobody on the board having questions, I don't know if anybody in the audience has any questions? Doesn't seem like anybody in the audience has any questions. Now, now is when I will remember to stare at the screen. I see one comment in the chat. I haven't looked at it, but I don't think that, that's been there for a while. I don't see any waving hands. So, doesn't appear that there's any questions. It seems pretty straightforward. It's great that folks in town are considering investing in. Our booming business district in town, so. I think that's it for, in terms of questions.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity to appear.
So I guess now we have, I entertain a motion.
To close the public hearing.
Public hearing. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move that the board vote to close the public hearing.
How about a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nobody opposed? I have, it looks like I have another motion.
So then the board can decide whether you're ready to take up the, the actual license transfer? Or if for some reason you weren't, you would continue it to the next meeting?
Well, from my perspective and I'll. I'm interested to hear what you all say, but this one seems straightforward. Considering the amount of. Questions, I think everybody thinks it's pretty straightforward. Do you need more time to vet? No, nor do I. And so I also feel pretty, I'm pretty confident in what my vote will be. I don't like to spoil things for folks who are scoring at home, but I would entertain a motion if anyone would want to.
Sure. I move that the board vote to approve the transfer of wine and malt beverage license not to be consumed on the premises for Ann's Market Norfolk, 65 Holbrook Street, Norfolk, Massachusetts. To OT Crew Incorporated and name Krista M. Wigan as manager.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Thank you very much for a.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Trying by moving this away, seeing if the.
Thank you.
Alright, so. Actually, it seems a little better now. I'm gonna blame the attorney. I'm gonna say that he had something. It's always the lawyers.
Easy way out.
Always the lawyers. Very, very shifty. So, Blythe, do you have any COVID updates?
Uh, I do. We have just two. The first one is that every week we check the state's website as to, as to what. Kind of how many cases we have and what the activity is. They post that every Thursday. And this past Thursday, it hasn't happened in a while, but we actually had three less cases. Went from 1,021 to 1,018. That did happen earlier in the pandemic and it was usually related to either a double counting by, or that someone would have been assigned to Norfolk who really lives in, oh, I don't know, Medway. And so when they've, someone scrubbed the paperwork, they realized that there are three less for us, but we're down by three.
But when you say down by three, you mean, like, when I hear you say that and you say you're down, I think, oh, people are healing. And then you say a thousand and twenty whatever, and I think, oh my gosh, we don't have that many right now. You mean in total from the inception of the pandemic.
Correct.
The amount that is attributed to us has been reduced by three.
That's correct.
Right.
And I mean, overall, I don't, I don't think I'm. I'm not, I'm not gonna say anything anyone doesn't know, but there certainly is a concern that there is, is a slight uptick in cases here in other places. And of course, we're monitoring what that looks like and whether there'll be any. Advice coming down that we need to change in some way, but so far, you know, it's been, for Norfolk, it has in the last, you know, month or two, been very limited number of new cases or not at all for about four or five weeks in a row. So, you know, we certainly hope that that continues. The other bit of news is that we received correspondence from the county that they are planning to manage the ARPA funds that are coming to counties. And they're gonna have a meeting in the next thirty days with all the communities to us understand how they plan to do that and how we will apply for the funds that would come, otherwise would have come to us. And that they're planning to share the lion's share of those funds with those, with the communities, keeping some for administration and some for a couple of projects that are, would qualify that they wish to do. So. I don't have those yet, but I'll share them with everyone when I do.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do we have a sense of how many or what percentage of Norfolk residents are vaccinated?
Great question. It's on our website. The former chair of the Board of Health does an update for us every two or three weeks. It's, we're slightly different than other communities because of the population of Norfolk State, you know, the prison. That throws off what is for, for the male population, so he usually in his updates just focuses on the female population, which is probably more representative of the whole thing. I just don't have that factor committed, but it's, it's good.
Excellent.
Yeah, it is good.
Thank you.
Is it, with respect to the prison, is that they're predominantly vaccinated, correct?
They are, but not as high as I think everyone would like to see.
Oh, okay, because I was gonna say, well, if it was gonna, you know, work in our favor to be like.
I, I think my.
Check out Norfolk's percentages, then I would say that maybe we should.
The takeaway is, is it's because it's a little less, it's not necessarily fairly representing for men?
No, okay, that's, yeah, that's fair.
Is the vaccine available to all inmates, so that it's a matter of choice?
Oh, yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they actually had clinics, you know, very, as soon as they could. Yes, they did.
Very early, yeah. So, which makes sense, obviously. Kevin, any questions?
Nope, none of mine.
I had another one. Oh, if you know, and I suspect you do, with respect to how they get the numbers, is it when I got vaccinated, it was automatically reported and that's where they pulled the numbers from? And not that my phone is secretly stalking?
I don't think so, but.
That's what I figured.
They don't tell me those things.
But that's how they know, is because they kept track. Because I'm worried, like, do I need to laminate my thing and whatever?
Not if you might have to have a booster someday, because then it's hard to update the card.
Okay, we could put a little sticker. I'll un-laminate it, right? I don't know. I have, I have that lamination machine and it's kind of burning a hole in my pocket. So, okay, that's.
But nobody's, their card's laminated.
I will bring in my lamination machine to the next meeting and we can laminate afterwards. It's a, it's a lot of fun. Anything you need laminated, calendars, there's so many things that you can laminate. Moving on to public comment, which as everybody knows is a time where folks can comment about anything that folks. Living in the town of Norfolk, residents of the town of Norfolk, not necessarily registered voters, but people who, who reside here. Can comment on any topic that touches upon the purview of the Board of Selectmen or the Select Board, excuse me.
Thank you.
And. That. They have three minutes in order to do so, understanding that often that comment that they're making would delve into open meeting violations if we responded. So that if we just look at them blankly, it is, there's a reason for it. It's not that we're not fascinated with everything that they have to say. I'm looking for my. Phone to watch the time, because I see Betsy's got her hand up and, uh, no. No judgment, Betsy, but. So, with that said, I'm staying as far from my microphone as I can because it's making me a little bananas. Do we have anybody? In addition to Betsy, who I will call first, but suggestion doesn't have to keep her hand up. Anybody else who plans on engaging in public comment, so I see all. How've you been?
Hello.
Hello, two, and maybe there's some on, on the screen as well. I'll worry about those next, or I will allow. She to do so. So, Betsy?
I have to get the green light.
You could also sit over here. It's better for you.
Sit there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I am well aware of the three minutes, so when I come with my notes, it keeps me. God. Okay. Is this on?
Maybe you'll use that microphone right there as well.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. This is Elizabeth Whitney, 26 Valley Street, Ponville. And I'm happy to be here representing the neighbors of Southwood Group, otherwise known as the PIP Group. PIP, by the way, Public Involvement Plan. We look forward to the process as we work together toward achieving no significant risk at the Southwood site, 111 Dedham Street, Norfolk. So I have a three-minute progress update to share with the board. The PIP Group submitted comments on July 2nd. To EnviroTrack, the licensed site professional, Mr. Byrd. We submitted them to the new owners as well as the Department of Environmental Protection. And DEP posted this under the main release tracking number for 111 Dedham Street as a public document. And copies have been forwarded to various boards. There are several major issues which include the following. Has the new buyer done their due diligence on past site history? Has the site been fully and appropriately characterized? Meaning identified and described under the Massachusetts Contingency Plan? What is the new owner's plan to conduct and complete a thorough assessment? What is the new owner's plan to conduct and complete a thorough assessment? The PIP Group, through our own due diligence, has identified areas of former buildings that have never been assessed, documented the acquisition and use of radium at the site, a complete lack of documentation regarding the disposal of radium used at the site. None of the previous environmental reports over the last thirty years have mentioned this, the disposal of radium used at the site. The PIP Group strongly urges not only the planning board, but where I appeared the other night, but all town boards to understand the uncertainty and unknowns
Thirty seconds.
on this property before any review that falls under their jurisdiction is done. Petitioners feel strongly committed to remediation first. And now the final LSP plan is due, a response to us within thirty days or by August second. Thank you very much. Three minutes?
You got it in under three. You got it in at two fifty-six.
Thank you.
You use those last four seconds, good, you know.
Go home and go play your number.
Thank you. That's our update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sir? Welcome to the chair. Didn't stop, I gotta reset.
Those of you who know me.
Sir Alex, how are you?
Ernie Alex, Forty North Street Norfolk. Twenty-five years I've been pushing for sewerage in this town. We're doing nothing about it. They just redid the railroads. We were able to run our lines down there. Now we can't. We're gonna have to pay the extra. I'm gonna be talking real fast, 'cause I'm trying to get it all in. It's a, basically a million dollars a mile to run sewerage. We're putting in approximately a hundred and fifty new housing. Hundred and fifty new housing times fifteen thousand dollars minimum sewerage charge to tie in is two and a quarter million dollars. We are basically flushing down the toilet money we are not gonna get in this town. Plus, we will have the fees after. We're looking to add on to the school. Add on to the school, you got to do more for the septic. If sewerage was down in that area, monies that would be thrown into that area for additional septic would be taken care of by sewerage. We wouldn't have to go for that money. Fire station, don't seem to know what they're doing. Bremelous property to me is the best place to put it. I built two schools in Franklin, forty-one million dollars each. The one that we built from scratch came in on time, million dollars under budget. The one we tried to renovate, I don't even know if it's done yet. I'd been out of there for almost ten years. Way, way over budget. We're screwing around, we're throwing away money. That site down there, if we moved the fire station, would be a great place to put a new three-story senior housing. The housing we have now is atrocious. We could sell the property off and would more than cover the price of putting it down there. I realize it's partially run by the state. We would have to work with that, but we do have a state representative that could be helping us work on it. We would have the money to handle all of this stuff if we would properly go ahead and do it in the timing, proper timing. That's the whole name of the game. We're getting way, way behind on what to do and when to do it. You're talking, basically go back again, a hundred and fifty units of housing at fifteen thousand dollars minimum. And that's just for new stuff coming in. I went to King Philip and I still put two and a quarter million dollars just right there. Was throwing money away.
Thirty seconds.
His usage charges, the whole center of town would open up if we had sewerage. Dunkin' Donuts wants to add on. Dunkin' Donuts wants to build another building, sell the Christmas trees. Can't be done. No sewerage. Sewerage would pay for itself if we could just get things off of the, off the dime, get it started. We're losing land, we're losing time. We've, we've gotta get going in this town. We're, we're not doing anything. It's been twenty-five years I've been pushing to get something going with sewerage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Say something very quickly?
Yeah.
Sir Alex, I don't know if you've seen yet, but we do have a draft wastewater master, master plan that was just posted up onto the website?
Well, everything's been done on Skype and on websites and everything else. And I threw my computer away a few, few years ago.
Oh, okay.
He can bring it over to you.
And I'm sure somebody in the office would be able to get you a copy if you'd like, but.
The idea of, you know, you would stop in, even the, the area next to the fire station, where they're gonna build on to. If you look at your town map, it says unbuildable lot. And they're gonna add the fire station into an unbuildable lot?
Okay, well, we're not gonna go down the building.
Just wanted to notify that that's available if you wanted to take a look.
On the sewerage, we gotta get going. Every, every day that goes by, we're losing so much money.
Yep.
And then there's the betterment that comes in with this, after you hook in, you, you get the charge of, of the sewerage. And then make every house that comes in, new ones. Builders would love it. They'd get an extra lot out of every five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be back.
We know.
I'd like to support that. I'm a kayaker and I've been on the Charles over the last few days. And we need to do something about the system.
Alright, is there any other question in the audience or any other opportunity who wants to take a moment? And Judith, is there anybody? I don't see any. Is there anyone? Alright, well, so, that ends public comment. And I guess we're moving on now. Number four is, I know what it is, but I'm gonna read it exactly right. Please consider appointments to various boards and committees.
So, we have a few things to talk about tonight. We have five different appointments for the board to take. Besides that, we have the Town Government Study Committee members are here to talk about where, kind of where they head next. So, I know that they're here. Mr. Metcalf is here in the, in the maroon shirt to talk about the ZBA. And we have some people who are interested, who are interested in serving on the Norfolk County Advisory Board. Would point out that there is a, a new appointment in Mr. Nicodermus, who's, excuse me, Mr. Collins, who's interested in the Affordable Housing Trust. He's here with the chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. So, and I think they have some time deadlines.
I did see that, that they had a time constraint. And beyond the fact that I instantly wanted a beverage, I will happily take, like, I looked at, I was like, ooh.
A Tom Collins.
Like, he's never gotten that before. So, I think it's fine to take that.
Yeah, if you, if you like.
Out of order.
He was at a recent Affordable Housing Trust meeting. He's been meeting and got a chance to kick the tires, if you will. And Tom Cleverd in the chair is also here in case you had questions for him.
I don't have any questions.
Would you mind just talking a little bit about your?
Sure. Currently retired. I live at Three Brook Lane here in Norfolk. I've been here over twenty years. Before retiring, I was the executive director of the Fall River Housing Authority in Fall River. I had the overall responsibility for managing five thousand units of housing, along with a staff of a hundred and fifty and an annual budget of thirty-five million dollars. Before that, I worked at the Lowell Housing Authority and before that I worked at the Semple Housing Authority. I've been involved in nonprofits. I have certainly a fair amount of experience. I served here in the town on the housing authority at one point. And I think that I can bring the skill set that I have to this committee going forward.
Absolutely.
I feel like you may have a little bit of, seems like you have a, a theme in terms of your qualifications that absolutely dovetails with what they are looking for. So, that's, it's pretty exciting that you're here in Norfolk.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, thank you.
So, I don't have anything for, I don't know if you, you don't, do you have anything you need to, you wanna add? No, I wouldn't think that you would need to. So, do you want us to do all of the votes at the end?
It's up to you. You can, you can do the vote now or you can wait till the end, whatever is the board's pleasure.
I'm like waiting until the end. I don't, I know that you have to leave, but I, and I don't wanna spoil it for you, but I'm gonna suggest that this is probably gonna go away, but I just think in terms of all of the information, if we just do a, at the end.
Thank you for having me here this evening.
Thank you for your contributions.
Thank you for your. Absolutely.
Sure, so you can take these up in any order. As I say, you've got at least, I see, see the three continuing members of the Town Government Study Committee are in the, in the rear of the room, if you'd like to meet with them?
Sure. Alright, so I'm seeing that at the, the, do I see? There, it was like, I didn't see Mr. Smith, but I wasn't looking closely enough. And I understand that this meeting, or the reason for this is just because of the, the, the volume of participants versus the need in order to have, to be effective. And so whether, and what you think about that?
Well, we think that five, five-member board would be fine. There's no issue that we have with that at all. If that answers your question.
They're currently seven, and so with three people, they can't have a legal meeting. And so the idea is if we change to five, that might be still a very good number to do the work that comes before them in the future. Makes it easier to get a quorum for those meetings.
And that makes, we had talked about that, and that makes total sense to me. And I would, I would imagine, and I think, I suspect I know the answer, but in the event that there is a groundswell in interest in government study committee work, would you entertain associate membership?
Yes.
There you go. That, so, any questions?
No, I mean, do you quickly have an outline of the things that are before the Town Government Study Committee?
Yes, we've been working on communication. It seems like it comes up and it goes, it goes round and round and round. And we've had some people that have talked to us about their ideas about communication. And the question is, do we get to a point where we actually have to have something in the bylaws regarding certain methods of communication that might be required of boards? We haven't gone to that stage yet. And we note that there's a, that there's now a, gonna be a financial component on the town website to explain matters, which is, we spent a lot of time working on stuff like that, so we're very glad that it's happened.
It's very exciting.
One of the other issues that, that I think we have to consider is, we changed about twenty-five years ago how building committees are established for various building projects in town. We abolished the so-called building committee, which used to be three people. And we went to a system that involved people that had a stake in the projects along with having citizen involvement. And I know that that's been maybe a little controversial the last couple of years, but we have some other projects that are coming online and I think it's time for us to revisit that concept. I gotta admit, it was my fault. That was a bylaw I proposed and got through town meeting, so.
I'm probably using this conversation at, well, I'm not intentionally using this conversation as sort of a backdoor to open meeting violation. But speaking of open meeting, have you guys ever discussed, and I know that it may not necessarily be your purview overall, but in terms of, you were talking about communication and how people communicate with one another and with the town. And I know that we are very small, but we do have two Dunkin' Donuts and two hockey supply stores. So, that says something. But we only have three selectmen. And ordinarily, I would select people, members of the Board of, Select Board.
Don't worry, I have a swear jar at home. Every time I say selectmen, I have to put a quarter in it.
I have my, my Board of Selectmen signs and I am not spending money on new ones. And, and you know, there's man and the woman and whatever, we can go on. But question is, we only have three people on the board, which means that any time that I see Anita at, at Dunkin's or Kevin at Silla's or whatever, there's sort of this, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna ask how he is, 'cause then someone will, and it never happens that way, but nevertheless. And with a board with five, that wouldn't be as much of a concern. However, I'm also mindful of the size of the town. Has it ever, and part of your sort of exploration of different town governance, has that issue ever?
Well, I think it's something we can look at in detail. I know it's been discussed in the town over the years that there's, there's, from experience in surrounding towns with five-member boards, there's been a lot of problems.
I guess it's probably so many, so cooks might be one of the personalities.
Callings can develop.
Oh.
And other.
Like Survivor.
Sort of like that.
Can we drop our lips in a coconut mallet?
Get voted off the island? So great.
But that's, that's definitely something we would look into. And also, now that we have the recodification, we can, of the town bylaws, we can go through that a lot easier and see what things to look into.
Right, which I actually think is a great point as well, in terms of rather than, what I'm happy to see is that rather than saying, oh, well, you know, we don't have enough for a quorum with the seven, so you'd see you in fifteen years when, when we need you again, to, to sort of adjust and then recognize that there are places where we could probably continue to do work. I, it seems great. Any questions? This one's not a voting one, even though we're tableally limited to the end of it, what we need to have a motion to change the.
We could, and I didn't script it, 'cause I wasn't sure where we would head with this.
Right.
But you could add a motion to reduce the size of the committee from seven to five. You know, if that's, if that's what you'd like to do, that would be certainly fine. If I could just add a couple of things. So, yes, we did add the, the transparency subscription as a, as a button on our page to get people to see how the town spent its money over the last few years. And then the demographics about the community. We're gonna be adding information about projects they're working on, like the fire station, the Southwood Hospital. And we're gonna start to do our capital and operating budgets digitally as well. So, hopefully more people will find that information and find it easy to digest. And you might be interested, a little bit later on the agenda tonight, just after this, is a appointment of the owner's project manager for the fire station project brought by the building committee that was formed earlier this year to kick off that project and move it forward. So, we are, we are headed on those, those sorts of things.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jonathan. And thank you, gentlemen, too.
So, just following your paragraphs, should we do the ZBA next?
Sure. So, Mr. Metcalf is in the audience.
Yes. Want me to come up or would you say?
Come on up. You can spend some of your time on kayaking if you want. We mostly wanna know about.
I'm a pretty, pretty active person. I, I've just recently retired. That's why I was interested in your comment. I retired from Weston House Electric Company. I've been involved in nuclear power plants, designing, construction, project management, all that sort of information. I've also been involved in hazardous waste disposal in previous job. But I'm, I, I got involved, you know, people have been talking to me, I should get involved more in, in Norfolk. Been living twelve years and now I'm retired, I've got time to do it. So, I'd start on something that might get me involved in different, different, the, the town organization. And my expertise, I have a PhD in engineering. I taught at Northeastern for a number of years as well. So, I've got quite a, a very wide engineering experience. So, people can run things by me. You know, I'm used to reading a lot of information, absorbing it. Used to looking at building drawings, construction drawings and that sort of thing. So, it's pretty interested in doing something while I'm, now I'm retired. But I've been in Norfolk. As I, one of the comments I made just earlier, I am a kayaker. I'm also a biker. I'm a motorcyclist. I'm a scuba diver, skier, a few other things. So, I'm involved around the town. People see me a lot, either riding my bike or riding the motorcycle. So, I'm pretty active here in Norfolk. And I like that the town is pretty interesting. But there are, as I'm seeing, there are a lot of things we need to do. I'm very interested in towns in Massachusetts getting involved in cleaning up their water. It's, it's a disaster about to happen. And as I said, I was on the River Charles and it smells. Something is wrong. Something is wrong. And Massachus, and it's all over Massachusetts, unfortunately. So, yeah, that's, that ought to be one of the priorities for the town is to, certainly as we're growing, we need to look at what we're doing for the future and put in that infrastructure to really make it work. Any questions? I've talked too much, I guess.
No, I have, I don't, I don't, I, when, when you say things like engineering degree and, um, PhD in engineering and professor in engineering, I, um, don't really have any. I was alternating between a desire to ask you if you wanted to put a shrimp on the Barbie, or were you familiar with, uh, uh, the Dirty Water song, because, yeah, the, the Charles is, it got better for a while, and anyway. Um, but no, of course, I don't have any questions. Do you guys have any questions?
No, none of mine, we're just excited to have you.
Okay, thank you.
Me too, excited to have you give your expertise to the town.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That is gonna be stuck in my head. Um, that's a good song. All right, so next on the hit parade. I'm having some page-turning trouble here. Here we go, got it. So, um, so that's the zoning board, and the next one down, again, sort of following along, I think this, this is the last one, right? I do see that there's an additional, um, cultural.
We have a couple of, yeah, we didn't necessarily ask them to come because they were fairly straightforward.
Yep.
Um, so we scripted those motions, there one that has had, um, we wrote a comment about was the advisory board, because there's several people who are interested in this, so.
That's right.
Where the board wanted to debate that at all, uh, before making a decision about who to appoint.
That's right, so there's the advisory board, and then next, and there's the, the Cultural Council and Affordable Housing Trust, there's nobody that we're just voting on them.
Those are all single, yep.
Okay, all right, so I just wanted to interpret my paragraphs.
And then for. Right, and for, um, the ZBA, for Mr. Metcalf, you have a choice of either a, the full-member opening, which is a five-year appointment, um, or a one-year associate position.
So is this one of those situations where we're kind and we ask him what he would prefer, or do we just throw him in the five and, like, run?
You could do it either way. It's up to you. He seems pretty keen.
Yeah. So, uh, if we said the five, how would you feel about that? How would you feel about a saying the five?
Awesome.
Yeah, okay, so there we go, that's.
That would be great, because then you'll, uh, they'll fully see, a full slate.
We'll have a full slate, right, and then we'll start, um, uh, rallying the troops for the associate membership positions,
For associates, yeah.
'Cause that's an exciting cocktail parties conversation. So now on to the Norfolk Advisory Board. Um, Blythe, if you wanna, I know that we know, but if you wanna fill the viewers in at home as to the board, and then we can talk a little bit about it.
So yes, uh, at recent meetings, we have talked, uh, with the current, the person who's been serving this role for a few years, Ms. St. Aubin, and I see she's here in the Zoom meeting. Uh, we also received a, uh, application from Mr. Ed Haddad, who has, um, another Norfolk resident who's been involved in our budget process and are interested in our finances in, in recent years. Um, and then the board also learned in this journey that in some communities, um, a, a select board member is appointed. Um, that was required when these were first set up, it's not required anymore, but that's a tax some communities have, uh, taken. So, uh, you have two citizen, non, you know, appointed to or elected to a board, folks who are interested in serving, and the board could also, you know, consider one of its members, uh, should it so choose.
So I think, and I'm open to suggestions, but I think that what I would do is, is have each of the non-board member citizens speak very, very briefly about their interest in the position, certainly, we've seen CVs in the past, and I have Mr. Haddad's CV. I don't know that I have.
Uh, we hadn't asked Ms. St. Aubin for it, because she's, she's better, you know, well-known to you and serving this role, yes.
Right, but she can, she's been on the board, right. And serving in this role, so we, um, we don't need people to sort of engage in recitation, you know, ad nauseam, but certainly highlighting some of their, um, career, right? You know, I, I, I understand folks getting up, perhaps, you know, they probably have similar degrees, but just what they've done with that during their working careers would be interesting information, maybe for like a minute or two, um, not even with the timer unless things get silly. And then, um, and then I kinda have some thoughts I wanted to talk about, but I wanted to put the horse before the cart. What do you think?
Um, my, I have a clarifying question, just so I understand our choices. We're choosing one of those three options, right?
Correct.
A select board member or one of the other two candidates.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
All right, so, um, why don't we go with Ms. St. Aubin as the current, um, person, blanking the word.
Um, hello, can you hear me? I unmuted, so, am I, can you hear me, please?
We can hear you, but you're, uh, in the room, you're a little bit fuzzy, but that may just be in the room, I can still hear you, but he's gonna see if he, he can fix that, I'll let you know.
Okay.
How about now?
Hello, is it any better?
It is, it's much better.
Okay, great. Um, well, thank you for the time tonight. Um, I believe I've been on this board for five or six years. Um, I really enjoy my time on the board. Um, the last meeting that we had, I did bring along Commissioner Stady, um, to talk about the federal monies that will be coming back, uh, to the county, to the town, to the state, and I think he gave an excellent presentation. I have a great rapport with Richard and the other commissioners, um, that are on the board, there's two others, Richard was recently elected. Um, I do have a degree in accounting, and, uh, this board work is all budget. Um, one of the things that I do on that board is that I go through the budget rather thoroughly, and I question the Norfolk County budget. I have from day one. Um, the first meeting that I attended, it was very obvious to me that, um, it was a rubber stamp kinda situation. Um, nobody's, uh, um, budget, which is about forty million dollars, nobody had it dog-eared, nobody had any notes taken. Some envelopes were being opened at the meeting itself to review the budget, and I came in with, um, a week or more's worth of work on, uh, looking at that budget and had a series of questions. Um, since that time, when they realized that someone was going to be, uh, questioning the budget and looking at it thoroughly, the board has turned around. Meetings are now a couple of hours in length. I'd like to credit myself for some of that. It seems as if I gave someone the courage to speak up and asking questions about, um, the course that sits on one twenty-eight, uh, excuse me, on the Southeast Expressway, Austin Golf Course. Um, there's some who said the Aggie School, um, and some of the salaries skewed. Um, if they're supposed to be getting a percent, a three percent salary increase, some people are getting twenty-five percent salary increases. I have gone through that budget, it steers sixty pages, and I go through it line by line. So I think I have brought, uh, great work to that board. I represent the town in Norfolk extremely well. I have always updated the Board of Selectmen with a pad afterwards. You can often see my notions of questions that I have asked, things that I have pulled on the budget, things that I have highlighted. The bits to the meetings will indicate how many, how many times Aubin from Norfolk is asking questions. And sometimes they don't always have the answer readily available. And as I say, the meetings were slashed when I first joined, fifteen minutes, where everybody just, fine, the budget's fine, let's move on. They are upwards of two hours, because people stepped forward, taken my lead, and started to ask similar to mine about, um, line items in the budget. As I said, I have read from Providence College, accounting, audited for four or five years, was the statewide candidate for audit in twenty-fourteen. I fairly well, I got thirty-seven percent of the vote, um, voted her in twenty-fourteen on the Republican ticket, ever having run for anything before. I would very much like to stay on this board. I have, um, deep friendships, very close to the registrar, Bill O'Donnell. If he were to speak on my behalf, I didn't ask anyone to do, I assume that my work was good enough, and I would be reappointed and ask anybody to step up and, and speak on my behalf, but I know there are many members on that board, as well as at least Richard D., and perhaps the registrar that would come to, like, they, they appreciate my work. Um, so, you know, that's, um, my background as far as the corporate work. Um, I divested into sales and marketing, um, after working for the Shawmet Bank for many years doing auditing work, but my degree in accounting has always been useful to me. I do have a master's in American history from Providence College and a PhD candidate, um, at Salve Regina in the Humanities Department. Um, and I think you all know me for the work that I have done for the town, um, and the very boards that I've sat on in the town previously. This board requires a lot of work. Um, my expertise to be on that board, I, I think speaks well, and, um, I, I rarely miss anything, too. So, thank you so much for the time. I appreciate your reconsideration for the Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, before we go to Ed, maybe a little bit of a, or you have some questions for it, maybe?
I was just thinking for the people here, they can't see her, and I was wondering if we could put it up here. Oh, you can see it, yay, all right, I was concerned about you, thank you.
Aw, you're so nice, I was like, yeah. You'll have nothing, and you're thoughtful, but I don't know, um, do you have any questions?
No, no questions, I'm.
No questions?
Nor do I.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next would be Mr. Hadded, with Ms. St. Aubin can mute herself, or if Judith can mute her, or I can, but I'm afraid I'll end up messing something up.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I will mute myself.
All right, Mr. Had, Haddad, Hadded, I'm gonna mess it up, but why don't you introduce yourself? And I, I don't know if we need to up it a little bit, if you guys in the audience could hear. I heard her, but it was, it was focus, 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 and so I don't know if with Ed we can. All right.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Thank you for giving me this chance to speak. Um, I'm, I, I didn't expect to speak tonight, 'cause I, I don't know that I was asked to, but I'm, I'm happy to certainly provide you some information about my background and qualification for, um, what I've, what I have applied for. Um, you have my, uh, my CV, which shows my background, my work experience, my main work experience. Uh, first of all, my degree is in accounting. I had a BS from Bent and a Master's degree in management. Uh, I worked for thirty years for New Balance Athletic Shoe, uh, in a corporate setting. Uh, for the, a large part of my career, I did accounting and, uh, financial planning and forecasting. I worked internationally, I coordinated our, our world distribution network, managed our international businesses for many years. And in the last, um, ten to fifteen years of my career with New Balance, I was in charge of the legal department, managing mainly our intellectual property, uh, patents and trademark works, counterfeits, contracts, um, that type of thing. So I have a very varied, uh, experience and background. Um, my experience is mainly coordinating with different groups of people, whether it was, uh, different accounting groups, whether it was different plants, whether it was different distributors worldwide, um, different law firms worldwide as well. Uh, that was my background. I retired five years ago and, uh, recently settled to Norfolk. My wife and I recently moved here about four years ago from Needham. Um, and I immediately got involved with the town, because that's the kinda person I am. I want to know and be involved in the town I live in. I was interested in that. I spent time in Town Hall, as, as Blythe mentioned, learning the budgeting process, learning how things were done here, because I, I, I wanted to, to know, um, before I, uh, before I asked questions, I wanted to understand, so my questions were intelligent, and I did spend the time to learning, uh, how things worked. Uh, I've been involved at the Select Board meetings, um, again, to learn and hear, uh, the kind of conversations that go on and, and what goes on in the town, a- as part of my own learning experience. For the last two years, I was on the B-one study, uh, commission, uh, which successfully, at the last town meeting, uh, got some very important zoning changes for the B-one, uh, district. That was something very new to me, again, something new for me, a new, a new learning experience. I, I didn't know anything about zoning, that was the kinda person I am, was to get involved in, in something new, and, uh, and, and I'm pleased to, uh, have been involved with something that ended up being very successful, and I think ultimately will be, uh, a benefit for the, for the town itself. So, um, my application for the advisory board is another new thing. Um, I, I don't think it's a big departure from my background and my experience, uh, but I think it's consistent with the type of person I am, delving in, my focus is, will be on Norfolk, uh, that's what my interest is going to be, and the best I can to represent and advocate for Norfolk, especially to get funds, uh, new funds coming out. Uh, that will be my, my focus, and that's why I'm interested in, uh, the application. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. If you can, I, um, I apologize, I didn't mean to put anybody on the spot by inviting you to speak. Um, but I just figured if we were gonna ruminate about you, that you should have the opportunity. Um, and Ed, you've put us on the spot to ask you any number of times in, uh, since I've been on the board, so I, about as fair play.
You've always done.
So, um, so thank you for that. I don't know if you have any questions for Ed before I. Um, so the next thing that I wanted to say before, um, we vote was, there's, um, there's the two civilians, for lack of a better term, I'll sort of back up so I can, the civvies, um, but when I, um, when I first started to think about this particular role and its importance in a way that I hadn't before, which was when we first learned about the potential for the money, I reached out to Bill Buckley, and that's when I learned, um, and I was surprised, right? Usually you don't have select board members, um, on boards that the select board appoints, right? Like, that's forbidden, but, um, that that was in fact the, the rigor up until not too terribly long ago. And so Blythe went and dug around to find out, you know, what was that all about, and in fact, they had, it was mandated because the advisory, um, or the, not the advisory board, but the commissioners are essentially, um, the next step up, the county's version of us. So, um, to have our level, um, person go speak to the next person up, sort of the same language made sense. There was a departure from that, but then there was sort of a reinvigoration of the idea of the select person being the one engaged in the role. I don't like to basically shove someone under a bus unless they've earned it, which Kevin hasn't, but I did pause it, like shoving you under a bus, like making, you know, nominating you for something without your.
Oh, okay. Oh, my God, what is she gonna say?
I wouldn't do it without basically having, you know, letting you know in advance. Um, and this is just sort of rumination, but also to let folks know, um, who are watching, what was going on and my thinking. And I know, um, that, um, and I'll, and I'll talk to, to, um, the other folks in a moment, but just in terms of, of you, I know that every time, um, you're involved, you'll drill down, you'll have the questions, you'll have done the background. Um, you're someone we rely on to have that information. Sometimes I'm, I'm like embarrassed, 'cause I'll be like, no, there's no questions, and you'll be like, rrrr. Well, in seventeen thirty-nine, I'm like, ah, it's a good one. But, um, generally, I think that you do a really good job of representing the town, which is kind of the raison d'etre of the role. Um, and that is no judgment on anyone else who's ever held the position. That's just my thinking, given how important it is right now, like the amount of money. Um, but I didn't want to sort of force you into it, and I don't even know if it's something that would be possible that if you had, if, if say hypothetically, this is just thinking high level, if hypothetically, he is on bond to decide that it should be you, and that means you'd also have to decide it should be you, 'cause if you're like, it should not be me, I'm not gonna vote for you. Is, does it make sense to have someone in addition, obviously they wouldn't be the advisory board member, but to assist, um, you in a role in terms of however you would see that, needing that, if you did. I, and I, I don't know that you would need that, but, um, but I wanted to know from you what, 'cause I think it would be great, but just because I, I've learned after fifty-two-ish years, um, that not everything that I think is a great idea is a great idea. So what do you think about it?
Well, at first, I appreciate the glowing, uh, review of. Well, first, I appreciate the glowing review of the short work we've done together.
Save, uh...
I can't wait to hear the other side of that, but, um, but no, I, I do appreciate that, thank you. And I do think that there are inherent benefits to having a member of the board be more closely tied into those discussions at the state level, especially when you're put in a position to represent the needs and wants of the community. What better, you know, board or group to be able to do that than, uh, the select board within each town? Um, I do know that there is also a big piece of it that's associated to knowledge of budget creation and management and I mean, I think that's something that we're very closely in, in the last three years, four years. Uh, so I do think we have that component covered as well. Definitely not to the degree of Ed or Patricia, uh, but I do think as it pertains to the municipal use of the budget, that kind of backing is there. Uh, so I'm definitely open to the idea, if we feel that that's a great way for us to be more engaged or at least reinvigorated in terms of the conversations that are happening at the county level and how we can maybe get more of the influence of the select board at that, uh, table, um, I'm absolutely open to that as a potential option, if that's the way the board's gonna go.
So, the only thing that I'd add, two things that I wanted to add before I turn it over to you. One is that this isn't, um, you know, it's a committee, it's three of us, it's just that I went sort of toddling off because I was concerned, um, about making sure that the, that the money came in and sort of finding out where we stood and et cetera. And when I heard that, I was like, "Err?", because it seems to your point of regarding how we've been involved and how you've sort of invested in the municipal, that municipal budget at this level, that that would make perfect sense. I didn't not consider you, only, uh, just because I knew what Anita's last year was like, um, so, uh, I wouldn't have, you know, sort of, it's not, this isn't a Survivor Island movement, um, I just wanted to...
No, I feel like I'm still at that novice end of, um...
Right, as am I to a, a degree and, and yet, yeah, so, um, so my thinking, as much as I am so appreciative of, um, both Mr. Hadid and Ms. St. Aubin stepping forward and I know, and, um, and I certainly hope that Patricia will, um, continue to come forward to volunteer, my sense is that right now, as opposed to any other time, right? For the last however many years, I'm sure Patricia's been doing a, an absolutely crackerjack job, but right now, more than any other time, I think that we need your skillset in order to get those monies. That's just my opinion.
And it's big monies, it's...
It can be, it's a game changer for all of the stuff that we have done, for all of the stuff that Ed and you guys all sort of worked on in the B1 Study Committee for the next level of all of the plans, it just, it's the order of magnitude for a town our size, um, it's, it's almost, almost renders me speechless.
Yeah.
Doesn't quite get me there, but it gets me close, so...
And it is an annual appointment, so once we get past the hump of this specific project, we feel we have a better idea of how things are working, we feel that we've made a good stake in terms of how Norfolk is represented, we could reassess this next year and determine how we wanna move forward.
Right, and you, you having been in there, will also be able to sort of determine what it should, you know, what it should look like going forward, because maybe it doesn't need a selectman, select person, um, but I, I tend to think that it does.
Uh, that makes sense to me. I'm curious about, do other towns have select board members on that or is it, do they have representatives?
It's, it's a mixed, it's some towns, it's a select board member, some towns, it's a, a citizen or, you know, a civilian, as Cece put it. Um, it's, it's whatever's right for each community.
And that's, yeah, we, Blythe did go out to check that it wasn't just some absolute wacko idea that I had and, um, I saw, um, the camera wasn't on Blythe's face as I said that, but I, I saw it. So...
Can I just comment on that?
Um, no, you may not. No, no. Um, can you, thank you. Sorry, there's no commenting right now by anybody. Thank you. So?
So, I think that, um, I haven't thought about this as deeply as you have, so thank you for thinking deeply about it, I appreciate that. I think that, um, Kevin would be an excellent representative for us on that board, given the amount of the monies. There, I do have a sense of loss because I think we do benefit from the relationships that, um, Ms. St. Aubin has created and I like the idea of thinking about her, continuing to partner with her, because she has served an important role for us in Norfolk, but so I hope that, um, as I consider this, which I think you have a lot of very good points considering the money and the difference that it could make for Norfolk, I hope that she understands that this is just, uh, response to our current situation, has nothing to do that with the, um, job that she's done for us here in Norfolk and that hopefully she will keep her finger on the pulse so we can, um, consider her again in the future.
I think that's a great point. So, should we move on now to the voting of all of the, because this is the last one?
Yes.
So, should we just vote on this one?
You can take them in any order you prefer.
Well, we might as well do this one because it's the last and we can then run up.
So, you had five that we scripted, then you'd wanna add one to, uh, reduce the size of this town government study committee from seven members to five?
Alright, what order do you feel like?
I probably should not be voting on my own appointment, correct? If that's the way that the board is gonna go, that feels a little wrong.
You, if you, if you have two other votes, you don't, you can abstain.
You could abstain.
Correct, okay.
So, let's start with that one, I'll move. Alright, I move that the board vote to appoint Kevin Calcott to the Norfolk County Advisory Board for a one-year term ending June 3rd, 2022.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstained?
One.
No? Zero. So, and you know, I'm sure Corporate Counsel will tell us if we've mangled it and we will come back and fix it.
It could be fine.
I think that we'll be fine. Now, moving on up the line, do I have a motion regarding the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Um, yes, if you'd just tell me Mr. Metcalf's first name again?
Chris.
Chris, thank you. Sorry, Chris. Um, I move that the board vote to appoint Chris Metcalf to the Zoning Board of Appeals as a full member for a term ending June 30th, 2026.
For a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I don't even know why I do that part, but it's leftover from the moderator days.
Should I keep going, Kevin?
Go for it.
I move, I move that the board vote to appoint Thomas Collins to the Norfolk Municipal Affordable Housing Trust for a two-year term ending June 30th, 2023.
For a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I move that the board vote to appoint Rachel Amendola-Vickers to the Cultural County for a term ending June 30th, 2024.
For a second? All those in favor, say aye.
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 La- uh, second to last, I guess, right?
I move that the board vote to reappoint Robert Nicodemus to the Southwest Area Planning Council for a one-year term ending June 30th, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, and I'll try this last one. I move to reduce the size of the Government Study Committee from seven to five.
For a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
Alright.
Good job.
And, and before we move on, I just wanna really thank, um, Ms. St. Aubin for her time and commitment to the, um, town in Norfolk. I think that that is very important to recognize the energies and the, that we have benefited from her relationships and her knowledge that, of her participation on that committee.
Absolutely.
And, uh, it looks like at least Ed Hadad is still here. We, uh, we know, we know where you live at in terms of volunteerism, so...
Thanks for your consideration, but I think, I, I agree, I think Kevin, you know, I, I've watched Kevin operate, I, I watched his skillsets and, uh, I think he'd be an excellent representative of Norfolk on the board.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed.
We're glad to have you here every single time, Ed, we're grateful to see your face.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad I don't tire you out.
So, we're glad to see you.
Thanks.
Um, alright, next up?
Two contracts to talk about.
Sorry.
First one is regarding the fire station project. Uh, joining us, uh, at the meeting in person is Kevin Champagne, uh, who's here as the Chair of the Fire Station Building Committee and joining us on the screen is John Lemieux, um, with, uh, the Vertex Companies. Uh, Kevin is, he's, joins me on the board, uh, and we've been working diligently since appointed to go through a process of recommending a firm to you, uh, to kick this project off and so that's what we're here to do tonight. Um, and I will turn it over to Kevin to tell you a little bit about it and why memo in your packet, there's a proposal from Vertex for the, the fee and the scope of work and there's a, a contract, so...
Uh, can everyone hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, I think as, as Blythe mentioned, been meeting, uh, regularly since, since the appointment of our, our board. Our first order of business was really to get an, an OPM on board and, and really kickstart the project, so our first order of business was putting together, together an RFQ, which we did. Uh, we actually had a really good response, I felt, to the RFQ, we had nine respondents, um, all, all pretty qualified. We were able to narrow it down, uh, through voting, uh, voting of all the, the board members to four, uh, candidates who we interviewed, I think it was June 14th and 16th. CHA, Pomeroy Associates, Colliers and Vertex. Interviews went really well. Uh, again, ev- everyone that was presented was, was very qualified. Uh, at the, the end of the second night, uh, the board voted, uh, we were able to narrow it down to two, uh, Colliers and Vertex, who actually both scored the same. So then we had some debate, uh, and did come to a unanimous decision to, uh, recommend Vertex, uh, for negotiation. Really the reason for that, and, and it was in the memo, uh, were a few things. We were really keen on having a, a company that was presenting a team that was, A, knowledgeable of course, in, in fire stations and public safety projects, but also a team that had, had worked together, uh, before and had, uh, members on it that, um, had been with the company for an extended period of time and we felt would, would stick through the project. So, we, we definitely felt that way with, with Vertex. The, uh, they also had a, a couple of projects where they were brought in to kind of bail a, a town out where either a project was over budget or, uh, the project was not going particularly well. So, we, we just felt that their, their qualifications, the, the, the members that they were presenting really kind of put them above and beyond. Um, so, we unanimously, unanimously, uh, selected Vertex, entered into negotiations with them, myself, uh, the Vice Chair and Blythe. We were able to come to what we felt was a, a pretty reasonable fee for the feasibility study. So, here we are now. Again, we, we think Vertex is really gonna help kind of get this project off on the right foot. Uh, once we kind of get them on board, the next big mile's getting a, a designer on board, um, and so we want that in earnest and this is kind of the first step in that process. So, I don't know if anyone has any questions or anything to add?
Thanks for coming and giving the, um, the recitation. I do have, I say one and of course then I'll think of three others, but right now I have the one. It, it thrills me as everyone's, I'm the parsimonious one in the group, um, to see that you sought a recommend, to recommend a contract award in the range of forty to sixty and the final amount was forty-two-five. Look at that, it's just like music to my ears, it's like a song. I'm curious how you arrived at your range? Was that just sort of like, how did you de- develop the, um, research that, or how did you arrive at the range? Just, I'm just interested in terms of where you got that.
Yep, so, uh, we're fortunate that our board actually has quite a few, uh, engineers and an architect on it that have worked on fire station and public safety projects. So, uh, we kind of tapped our, our collective resources and, and looked into past projects of, of what percent, um, an OPM typically is, is paid on, on a project. We took that, we tried to estimate roughly, now, I mean, we don't know if the project is gonna be a renovation, we don't know if it's gonna be a new build, that's kind of, we're assembling the team to figure that out, but we tried to take our, our best stab at what we thought a, a reasonable construction cost would be, took a percentage of that, that that's what the OPM fee would be if the project went to completion through construction and then applied again our expertise that, um, typically a smaller percentage of that is reserved for a feasibility study. So, as a board, we, or as a committee rather, we, we came to the, and agreed sum of in the forty to sixty thousand dollar range based on all that.
Thank you. Anita, any other, any questions?
No, I just wanted to comment that in, um, going through the packet and looking at the work that you've done, I'm really grateful for the, um, transparency of the process and that the process is really tight and really clear and so it doesn't leave room for wonderings or musings about what if we had done, and so, thank you for that work and I think that that has, it benefits the town and especially in, in light of previous projects, let's put it that way. I think this is really beneficial to us as a town, so thank you very much for that work and I look forward to seeing the next reports.
Kevin?
Um, so, quickly, just to piggyback on Anita's point, Blythe, as we look back to, for lack of a better term, the learnings we had from our last project and selection of the OPM, how did we transition some of those into this process? What kind of things did we bring over?
I think as Kevin mentioned, it was really important for this group to hire a team that had the stability and the, the, uh, bench, uh, to work with and, and John Lemieux in the top left, uh, zoom box is, is from Vertex, if you have any questions for him later. And I brought with me there what they handed out, you know, at, at the interview that we had with them in June, and this is just the twenty-eight public safety buildings that they've done, some of them are our neighbors, um, that stood out, that they, they, they brought a quality project home and they did it, um, within budget, on time, um, and gave the communities, you know, s- sound advice about, you know, which way to go. I mean, we have a, a real, um, decision point ahead of us, do we, do we renovate and add on, do we tear all down in phases and build all new? What's gonna be the best use of the money? And we were very blunt with them, with all of the firms, about the issues that we've had and we're not interested in going down a similar path and wanting to make sure that this team was gonna support us. So, I, I think that they will and I also would point out that this contract we're asking you to approve is just through the feasibility phase and we're gonna do the same with the designer, because we wanna make sure, once, because we're gonna bring that back to you and ask you, and give you our recommendation, ask you to say, "Okay, get, yes, good job, keep going on," or, "No, stop, do something different" and make sure that this team and the team that we'll hire next are the right ones for the project. And I think that was a lesson learned, we really wanted to be thoughtful about.
Awesome, thank you. And Kevin, thank you so much to you and the committee as well. I mean, right now, this is probably one of the most important things before our community right now, so a lot of eyes, a lot of interest, everything is kind of bearing on the discussions you guys are having. I haven't had the opportunity to jump into as many meetings as I'd like to, but the few I have, the dialogue, the course of discussion has all been very representative, I think, of the importance of what we're going on, uh, what we're undertaking here.
I, I think we have a great committee, um, and, and to piggyback on what Blythe said, she said it more eloquently than, than I could, but, um, you know, we were all kind of brought up to speed on what happened with some of the previous projects and, you know, the stability that we feel Vertex brings was, that was, really kind of put them over the top in my opinion.
Fantastic.
I do, oh, I'm sorry.
And if you, if you see fit to vote on this tonight, we have a meeting tomorrow night to work on the designer contract, so we're ready to go.
I have a, one more question, um, Blythe, something that you said just again, kind of piqued my interest and I think that people at home might be interested in it as well. When I was reading the data that you supplied, I noted that they, everybody provided references and that the references were followed up on. Um, I'm wondering, and because maybe they're the same and maybe they're different, if they are different, um, did you have a chance or did someone or someones on the committee have an opportunity to reach out to folks, uh, involved in the other towns', um, buildings that are in that?
We did, we did it in two steps. First, we did a Google survey...
That's cool, I just think that's such a great opportunity.
To all the references and that yielded good results and then, uh, four different members, and I was not one of them, um, could, were assigned one of the four finalists to follow up on reference checks. I think it was, uh, Mr. Hunt who handled Vertex and I, he wasn't able to join us tonight, but, um, what, I think I heard at the meetings was that the references for, for both Vertex and the other finalists were, were spot on.
Were the reference, I guess my question was more, were the references some or all of the buildings that are sort of neighboring, like...
Yes, we asked them for, for references of all the public safety projects that had been done in the area. And they don't do just public safety, um, they do town halls, they do libraries, they do all, they're primarily in the public sector. Is that correct, John?
That is correct, Blythe.
Thanks.
Um, there are, um, Ernie, it's been a while since you've been here, welcome. The, the... There are, Ernie, it's been a while since you've been here. Welcome. The rules are changed. I'm sure you've been to some town meetings that I ran. There's public comment. The public, yes. You enjoyed them. You have them on. Ernie, you can go home to watch at your leisure. I know. There are opportunities for question and comment. I'm pretty sure this is not a public hearing. So, public hearings, the folks at home and in the audience can comment, and in the public comment section at the beginning. But other than that, in order to get through it, we won't be entertaining questions or comments. So, that's, I'm just letting you know. Most other people know, but that's it. So, do you have any other questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
All right. You?
No.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. He'll be back.
Yep. So, the second contract we have, we can either move ahead and do this one or we can do two votes at the end. The second contract is for independent.
Two votes at the end is, you know, just keep thinking, I mean, just because there doesn't seem to be any.
Unless they're waiting.
Oh, that's true. If you guys need to go, would you, I will just vote for now. Look at you, considerate person. Let's just move over now. Do you have anything you would like to talk about before we vote on this contract?
No.
Anita?
Mm-mm.
All right. So, hearing no comments, do I have a motion?
I move that the board vote to award a contract for Fire Station Owners Project Manager Services to the Vertex Companies through the feasibility study phase.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that the board vote to.
Whoa, 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 wait. We haven't talked about that one.
Slow down.
When you said, does everybody have any questions, I thought you were pushing that through. Got it.
No, no. I just meant on that one.
If there's two bold moves, I'm just going to keep going. I don't know how you're going to stop that moving forward.
He's just an overachiever.
Yeah, in case these busy people wanted to go.
All right. So.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, Blythe, the next?
Yes. So, joining me in the back of the room is Mr. Todd Lindmark, the finance director. Todd and I have, mostly Todd, I won't lie, put out a RFP this spring for independent audit services. The town has had the same audit firm since 2008, though the firm we had was bought by a larger one somewhere along the way. And, you know, service wasn't quite what we expected in the last year or so. And it's also been, it's a best practice, I think, and priority for me, that you change auditors every so many years just to make sure you have a fresh set of eyes at what you're doing and you don't have any comfort level that, you know, is created between an audit firm and the folks that they're auditing. So, we put out an RFP. We received six different proposals from very qualified firms. We qualified them. We interviewed three of them. And we are excited to recommend Roselli, Clark &amp; Associates to the board to approve. We did not ask them to come tonight. We, they have, they're a mid-sized firm who handles a lot of communities of our size and makeup. And they, but they also do other work. They handle MSBA projects for some communities, which have, who have a lot of those. But they are located nearby to us, and they impressed us with their experience and their approach. And at the end, I put my ace negotiator on the task to, after we opened the price proposals, to work with them, and he did a terrific job. We budgeted thirty-five thousand dollars for this service based on what we've been paying. If we did not require a single audit, which happens when you have over three-quarters of a million dollars in federal funds, which is hitting a lot of communities year and will be because of the federal funds, we would be spending twenty-seven thousand five hundred instead of the thirty-five thousand we've been. But for this year, it's going to be less, thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars, including the single audit. And so, we're excited that we're going to get a firm new to Norfolk. I have worked for them before in other communities, but that wasn't really a decision-making point and for a slightly better price to the taxpayer than we've been spending in the past. So. Todd, anything to add?
So, again, I love the better price. Odd as the identified by Blythe, so I'm not undercutting her authority, as identified by Blythe, numbers guy. The guy within the know with the numbers. The other firms, the firm that we have currently, the other firms that were responsive, I guess that was all of them, to the RFP.
Sure. So, with respect to looking at the different firms, CLA is probably on the larger size. And their business model has changed. So, it becomes a little bit.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. Excuse me. There's a meeting going on, so if we could take it outside if you need to talk, that'd be great. Thank you.
And because they are a larger firm, they're not necessarily beneficial to the town in Norfolk.
Yep.
So, it became a little harder these last couple of years, working with them, the interactions, getting reports on a timely basis, things of that sort. So, Blythe and I discussed earlier this year, let's look at potentially getting another firm in here anyways just because of the items that were going on at that time with them as well.
Yep.
And so, we entertained the option of sending out the RFP late May. Got a bunch of responses back mid to late June. Scheduled the meetings for mid-July. Like we said, we met with three of them. One of them was a smaller firm, individual guy that was pretty much going to be running the show. But the concern was there. It was an individual. So, while he did have other competent auditors in the firm, it was more or less him. So, that was one of the factors. Reason why we went with Roselli was they're a mid-sized firm. A lot of the clients that they have are similarly related with what the size we are. The interaction that I had with them during the interview process was very productive, warm, our needs, explain exactly all the items, even the single audit process that we need to do as well, going over that aspect as well. So, very high comfort level there through the interaction process, but also the fact of the additional personal training that they do within their firm, but also provide to us. So, if a year, they would be able to provide us some updated information to help us out. We can reach out to them a lot more easily, I think, than the CLA process. And then, ultimately, it comes down to, and the fact that we're under budget with the single audit and, you know, there'll be a reduction of forty dollars next year and the five hundred dollars increments there are. So, overall, the baggage we're presenting to you guys.
Awesome. Thank you. That was all the information that I needed. Anita?
Yep, that sounds great. Thank you for doing that work.
Never mind.
I don't have anything further. Do you have anything more you want to add? I think that, I think that clears it kind of a motion you might like to. All right. Please yourself.
I move that the board vote to a contract to Roselli, Clark &amp; Associates for independent audit services for a period of three years and authorize the town administrator to execute a contract.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number six?
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
It's time to think about the fall town meeting.
All right.
I know. Well, we usually do it a little bit later, but since we don't have a meeting till late August, and we wanted to have town meeting a week earlier than we have in recent years, on November ninth, we're asking you to open the warrant now and close it just September first, I think I had scripted. Yes. I have started to let people know of that date and to be working on those sorts of things. But included in your packet is a letter that will go out to everybody tomorrow if you so vote it and a copy of the calendar that they'll be receiving as well. Basically, they've got the summer to get us their articles. I have already started a list of what I expect, but lays out all the steps that everyone will be going through to get us to successfully to November ninth. We have booked the middle school auditorium. Feeling comfortable at this point that is going to be the right space for this meeting. And just in case, booked it for a second night if we need it. Moderators on board, advisory's aware. So.
Is there any, is there any concern about the location, given the last year and the pandemic, et cetera? We think, we feel, I mean, I understand that we can't present, prevent recurrences, but given if everything sort of continues, it's bumpy landing.
We got good at pivoting last year, so.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
I'm sure we'll figure it out.
And you said, I think you said, the middle school, right?
Middle school auditorium.
The auditorium. The high school, the capital was, the acoustics were not, not great.
No, no. So, as I said, I run it by the moderator. Town council's on board to have it there, and we'll keep our things and, as I said, pivot if we need to.
Awesome. That was it for my questions. Any questions?
Were the moderators available both that night and the next night in case?
Oh, I asked him, then I asked town clerk, then I asked town council.
Blythe, is there any concern about us just having one more meeting before closing the warrant on the first?
No, I can give you the list as I know it for that night on the 24th. I can send it to you tomorrow in terms of what I think is coming. Capital, we are talking about recodification of both the general and zoning bylaws. We need to update our floodplain bylaw. Those are the ones that immediately come to mind. It's not a long list. I'd say there's twelve, fifteen items that are all possibilities right now. But I haven't, I don't know what projects the CPC will bring forward, if there'll be any citizen petitions. That's the kind of thing I'm not sure of yet. But they're all aware that this memo is coming out tomorrow, or they have time to plan whatever things they're thinking about.
If you could just refresh my memory, when would we typically pass have closed out the fall town meeting warrant? Was it mid-September?
It was for a meeting usually the week after this. But we found in recent years, it's a little tougher to, if you do it the week really before Thanksgiving, it's tough to get the tax classification hearing done.
Right.
And then, you're in the, you know, you're in the back of the pack at the DOR, trying to get your tax rate set so you can get your bills out. So, we're trying, doing it a week earlier this year and seeing how that goes.
Okay. Thank you.
Bling trails with taxes. It's exciting stuff. I have no further questions. There's nothing. We have, yep, there is a vote. So, it's on, it's on the next, after the thing. Can I get?
I move that the board vote to open a warrant for a special town meeting to be held on November ninth, 2021, and close the warrant for this meeting on September first, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Seven.
Yes. In your packet is a package from Mr. and Mrs. Slattery, who have a thirty-two acre parcel of land off of Cranberry Meadow Road, off of Lawrence Street, that is in the 61A agricultural and horticultural land program. This parcel has come before the town, I guess, more than once in the past because, as you know, under chapter 61, the town has a right of first refusal in these programs. And that's based upon them bringing forward to the board a signed purchase and sale agreement for the property. And the town has a hundred and twenty days to decide whether it would like to exercise that right and buy it or not. So, we have circulated this to the various boards, conservation, planning, and the CPC have all discussed it as well as the departments. And our collective wisdom and the vote of the CPC was to forego the option to purchase it for 1.4 million dollars. We, they are planning to let to a gentleman who is planning to develop it. He was, he had been the entity playing to buy it the last time this came before the community, but it was withdrawn at that point, my understanding, was due to the availability of public water near the property. Since that last time, Lawrence Street Bridge was redone, water was brought across there, and it's going to be brought up Lawrence Street to Waits Crossing. And so, I think the dynamics have changed in that area. I did speak with Mrs. Slattery last week. They would, you know, they're asking the boards, the board to take a decision on this so they can, you know, move forward. They'd like to see this resolved for themselves. The only thing I would say is that it has been identified by our water engineering firm that handles our water matters that as we develop in this area of town, it will be important for the community to have a third water tank in that area. And this property had already been identified. So, if we take a pass on it, interest will be to reach out to that person and try to work toward how we could possibly site a tank, you know, on that area. Not necessarily to build right away, but just be able to do that when the time right to continue being better prepared for water service.
You sort of answered the one question that I had, which was the need for the water tower. Do we have any sense of how the builder feels about that in the future? And I would imagine that it would depend on what it is that we have, that he wants at that time. In other words, it hasn't been vetted, but I would, you suspect that it would be something that he would be.
He certainly is aware.
Okay. Awesome. Kevin, you have any questions?
This is a weird milestone for me. This is the first time that I'm going back and saying, wow, I remember talking about this when I was on the planning board. I guess that eclipsed that.
Yep.
It's fun. But I do remember when this project was first proposed, and we worked for a long time on trying to make it work. But I think it was heavily dependent on the development over at Abbeyville in order to be able to come to fruition, which obviously never happened, at least in its proposed state. So, I would look forward to see what they're thinking. I imagine it's probably along the same lines, just with the ability to access the water. So, makes sense to me, especially if everybody else is on board.
I went the rabbit hole on this one. And it did, and it certainly did. And so, I guess I got sort of thinking about 1.4 million, and of course, CPC probably doesn't have that kind of money, and I'm not familiar with the property. But I started thinking about twenty-two more homes. And I'm going to put on my school hat right this minute. And so, I confess I was in the rabbit hole, so feel free to think about. I did a CC sort of and went down there. And so, if we think about.
I'm glad that that's, okay.
So, if we think about in schools, I looked it up, choose the schools, it costs between nine thousand and seven thousand dollars to educate a child in the town. In Norfolk, we're at the very low end of that. We're below a ton of towns. King Philip is also at the low end of it. Sixteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-four, and that's old data. That's back to 2019, to educate a student. So, if we put twenty-two homes, they have an average of one kid. It's going to cost us a lot of money to, and they're paying, let's say, I did the math, if they're paying ten thousand dollars in taxes, which I doubt that they are. And then.
It seems low.
It seems low, but, so let's say they pay, we're in the hole and we haven't even plowed a street. We haven't even checked out a library book. We haven't done fire or police or whatever. And so, as we build these homes, I just think, and I know that this isn't the format to do that, but we need to think of the consequences of the town financially. And so, it could cost us, and my math was just quick, back of the, back of the napkin math, but if, 1.4 million seems like, whoa, that's a lot. But if they have more than one kid, it could cost us a quarter of a million a year. Kids are in school for thirteen years. And so, your taxes don't pay enough for one kid. And so, if we're building twenty-two more homes, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't, I'm just saying that we need to be aware that there's consequences of those beyond water and beyond a tank. Is that this is going to come back to us, and they're going to earn more money to educate these kids. And it's because they're, it's in the budget. It's because we now have all of these children that be educated as we build more and more of the homes. I'm sorry about the rabbit hole, but I did it to my piece. And it could cost us a quarter of a million a year that less their taxes. And that we didn't even plow the road yet, send an ambulance or do any of the other services that we provide as a town. So, that's my little diatribe, and now I'm over.
Sorry. I'm still stuck on the rabbit hole comment. I think it's a great point. I don't, I agree. I don't know that.
It doesn't affect this.
That this particular vote is necessarily affected by it, but I do think that there may be answers to some of the concerns, and there may be more questions that those answers engender. I suspect that there, that is part of. and there may be more questions that those answers engender. I suspect that there, that is part of, um, how other groups function in terms of making decisions, planning board, et cetera, zoning, um, but it's a great point in terms of how do you, um, mind the store, right? Because we're constantly, and there's nothing, I, I still am sort of in the make sure that we have the numbers so that we're not subject to, um, forty B, hostile forty B, but when you do that, you end up with school expensive, right? You know, that, so what, where is the balance between growth and fiscal conservancy? Will you, look at you, just coming down the fiscal conserva-
That's right. Because.
Rabbit hole with me.
If one point four million sounds like a lot of money until it's costing you a quarter of a million a year to educate the families that are living there. So you have to consider that, I think, as you consider the cost of purchasing.
Right, just using this as an example.
And I'm not recommending that we purchase this land. I'm just saying that that's a variable, an expensive variable to the town that, um, is a ver- it's to be considered.
I guess probably one issue, and I, and I know that maybe this isn't the night for it, but you know, I smell a study committee. No, I'm just gonna talk about it too, because I, I suppose one of the issues, right, is that just with any budget, I may not be able to run out and purchase a Bentley, but, uh, but if maybe, you know, you bought a little bit every, you know, the, the idea that you, you know, if there's not enough money to do the full outlay versus, um, how much the, the cost to the town is going to be impacted is, and again, just using this folk, these folks, um, who hopefully aren't watching and like, would you just vote already?
I'm sorry.
No, 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 like, I'm entertaining, I think it's an, it's an interesting point. Um, you know, if you have twenty-two homes on thirty-two, I, I, there's no way to, to gauge, right, how many of them are going to be, but I think it's a safe bet, right?
That they're gonna have a kid in our school system for thir- thirteen.
Or at least, you know, maybe eighteen to nineteen of the houses will, right?
Right.
There's always the grandparents who come in to, to, to hang out a little nowhere with their grandkids. What are your thoughts?
I, I mean, you make a great point. I mean, these are all considerations need to be made whenever you're assessing whether the town should move with something like the right of first refusal. Uh, but I also think you need to gauge about the impact of what could be built on thirty-two acres in our town as it stands right now, if somebody were to go to route of forty B or something like that, right? You'd be seeing upwards of hundred, hundred and fifty units, um, on a project like that with God knows how many children associated to it. So with CPC having funds somewhere around the two point four million dollar range, I think that, you know, once we get to these larger plots of land, these farmlands, these big swaths that, you know, could potentially really impact us, those are the kinds of things where I think we'd have to push our seats back and take a stronger look as to what that impact would be long-term. For twenty-two units, yeah, it's not gonna be great and I understand that if they are coming in with two and a half kids per household, then we are gonna be putting ourselves behind the eight ball. See, I can't talk. I can't say anything about that now, so I'm just gonna, but, um, but you're right. Uh, it is a consideration that needs to be made as we go down the road with these conversations, because we're gonna be having more of them, uh, in the future for sure.
Thank you for entertaining my musings.
That's what we're here for.
Thank you very much.
Um, so I guess we need a motion, right?
Am I up? I move that the board vote to waive the town's right to notice of sale and waive the town's right of first refusal to purchase thirty-two plus acres of land uh, um, located at the assessor's map, six block one, lot five and seven pursuant to Massachusetts general law sixty-one A.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number eight. Oh, Nate, I'm gonna talk about.
Yes, you are.
So number eight was the performance evaluation for the town administrator, who is to my not quite left, left. Um, but some of us, including my, mostly me, were somewhat late in getting our information in.
Envy.
And so, um, we decided that rather than do this under the gun, we would let, um, the, the information. Late, it's gone to be able to edit without us screaming, we need it in two minutes. And I'm sure there's a better, more eloquent way of putting it, but in any event, it's been tabled. It will come up in August, which reminds me, I know that this, we moved the date in August and then when I left old firm to go to my new firm, they shut you off on the computer, which wiped out my calendar, even though they assured me that they would send it back. They did send it back, but it's wonky. Um, so.
August twenty-fourth.
August twenty-fourth is when it is. I thought we were, like, somebody's vacation or something or.
It was gonna be the seventeenth.
Okay, so that's.
And then we moved it to the twenty-fourth.
I actually think I may have had that.
We'll be away that week.
So, yeah, I knew there was a vacation snafu and I just wasn't, okay, so it's the twenty-fourth.
Yep, that worked to my benefit, so thank you for vacationing.
Oh, my gosh. All right.
It's gonna, um, oh, it's gonna be, there's gonna be a fair amount. I warn you now.
That's fine.
Uh, we're saving up, because it's, oh, over, you know, a little over a month, it will be, um, a, a piece to take care of.
Awesome. I'll bring popcorn.
Excellent. We'll bring snacks and goodies. Um, all right, number nine.
So we have a request from the garden club. As you know, they had, uh, done some yeoman's work, uh, through a grant and their own, uh, fundraising and hard work to, uh, replant the veterans' gardens at the cemetery and they would like to have a vacation ceremony on September twelfth and they've got a rain date of two weeks later on the twenty-fifth at one P M, so they're asking for the board to, uh, consider approval of them to, to have that ceremony, uh, on hopefully that first date. Um, and, and be able to set aside the space for them to do that, that day.
I, uh, I don't have any, does any, is there someone here to explain it? Do we need it explained?
No, no.
I don't have any questions. Do you?
No.
I think it's fabulous that we have a garden club that did this work.
They do awesome work.
I know.
I think it's fabulous. I hope they let us know if they need any help from us beyond this.
I wish I had a green thumb. I could out there and help them, but I don't.
I kill plants, so. I don't know. I can drive things places, that's why. I can't, I just need plastic plants. So I guess, do we have a motion?
I move that the board vote to approve a request from the garden club of Norfolk for a rededication of the veterans' gardens at the Norfolk Town Cemetery on Sunday, September twelfth, twenty-twenty-one, with a rain date of September twenty-fifth, Saturday, twenty-twenty-one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Number ten.
Um, staff is very excited about this. Uh, I think you, you learned about this, uh, in the town meeting process to increase the size of the evolving front of the COA. So this is a contract between the town and Gatra, um, which is our regional, uh, um, transportation provider to actually provide us with a physical bus that is handicap accessible, um, and the funds to operate that bus to expand our ability to serve our elderly and disabled population to where they need to go for various appointments or shopping or whatever in the immediate area. Um, the money actually comes from what we pay through our, our state assessments. Um, it's really gonna be coming back to us and so they will give us the actual bus, uh, to use. Uh, they will provide us with funds to pay a driver that we will hire and we're in that process of hiring a driver right now to, uh, actually drive the bus and, and take people where they need to go, um, and some minor expenses for the work we'll do to dispatch and coordinate and that sort of thing. So, uh, it's, we'll be able to draw up to forty-seven thousand dollars a year for this and we're excited to launch it because, as you know, our, our existing bus is not handicap accessible and uh, is a little bit limited in what it's able to do. It's great for some types of trips, not for others.
Bless you.
Bless you.
And so I think this just adds a ability to serve our community that, you know, we haven't had as much before, so.
So am I reading this correctly that if the total contract is for fifty-five and we're able to drop to forty-seven thousand, that that's an outlay of eight?
No, that's, they're keeping, the total was fifty-five and the difference is what they keep for any of the, uh, costs they have for bus maintenance that we're not gonna pay ourselves.
All right, so it's not something that we owe them, though?
No, we owe them, uh, reports so they can send us money.
We're like that.
Yeah.
Excellent.
I was, 'cause I was even like, yeah, this is something we should even pay for, which is, I know.
You're already paying for it through your assessment and it's getting.
That's awesome. That's great. Kevin?
No, no questions for mine.
I am.
Excellent.
Yeah, um, do I have a motion?
I move that the board vote to authorize the town administrator to execute a contract to, with Gatra for transit service to the elderly and disabled for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry for the extra two.
That's okay.
Um, eleven, the correspondence, um, I, I can read. So it looks like the, because we haven't really had anything, the idea is, do we need to keep saying, do we have anything, or do we wait until there's a week? Because now everybody gets, right? If you write something that we think is interesting or touches on something that's a hot topic, we're gonna post it. And if you write something that's, um, sassy, we're gonna post that too. Um, and, uh, that if sassy or interesting things come in and the, somebody feels that we should put it on the agenda, we will, but otherwise, why keep visiting it on the agenda, which I, who likes to streamline, tends to agree, but what do, what do you guys think?
I think originally we were kind of unsure about what would meet the qualifications to be able to put up, so we wanted to have the opportunity to discuss it, to see what would be considered, but I think now after almost a year of doing that, we have a pretty good idea of what's qualified and what's not the second it comes in, so I agree.
Yep.
So I'll just check in with you guys about a week before and say, hey, do you have anything that, you know, I might not have gotten and you'd like to discuss and then I'll put it on if, if, if there is.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent.
Um, number twelve, um, your updates, Blithe. I'm just gonna hop in at the front to say that I do have a question for you at the end that isn't related to anything that you were going to say, but I couldn't think of anywhere else to put it because I was so discombobulated during, um, the public comment about the audio.
Mm-hmm.
That, um, I didn't, so I'll let you do your thing and then I.
Just wanted to bring your attention and we don't usually get a, a bill for zero dollars, um, but it's, you know, something that stands out and I wanted to just point it out to you. So in your, in your book is a, is a bill for zero from the, from the MECC, um, and it's zero because this, the year that, starting August eighteenth, we are taking over the dispatcher amended in Millville that's finally going live. We, like everything COVID, that got delayed from when we'd hoped to start earlier this calendar year, but the reason the bill is zero is because the state in order, when they asked us to take on these two communities, agreed to provide the town last year, this fiscal year, with a hundred percent of the costs of running the MECC. So, um, what would have been a bill for about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars became zero for us, um, excuse me, three oh seven. Um, and, um, next in FY twenty-three, it does start to go back up. We will pay, uh, uh, twenty-five percent of the cost next year and fifty the year after and then a hundred, so unless we take on any other communities, but it's just positive to share with people.
Yes.
You know, we weren't sure when we got into the MECC what this would really mean and, um, I, it's going in a good direction, so we're pleased.
I'm sure that it's not going to be that big of an impact, but are there metrics being put to identify what the impact of adding to additional community to respond on phones, anything like that?
So we did add, um, when we opened the MECC, um, we did add another, uh, fire, police dispatcher after the original. Um, but that really has been absorbed in what the state's been willing to do for us. Did budget in FY twenty-two for potentially adding a dispatcher uh, halfway through the, once we get this, these two towns on board and once we see what the call volume is and whether or not we need another person in order to be able to properly meet that. It's always, you never know when those calls are gonna come in, um, but, um, these are smaller communities and their call volume, we're not anticipating we need to, but we budgeted for it just in case.
Okay, great, thank you.
And we can probably add one more community of a size like ours or slightly smaller in the future with the size of the MECC on the second floor as it is. Beyond that, it, we would have to change the footprint there in order to add the seats to have the people do it.
Right.
Um, but like I said, we started with four, now we're going to six and, um, you know, I wasn't here for when it was planned, but it's, financially it has worked out, I think, better than we had planned.
Great.
It's great news.
Yeah, so.
Um, so the only thing that I had, and it may be something that needs to go on to the next agenda, um, but I'll, just a little highlight on my question, so it's not really like a discussion item. I recently learned, um, that a, a, a person in town who had been an employee and who had retired and was receiving his retirement, then went to work somewhere else, didn't, was part of a layoff or whatever, I don't know, it ended, applied for unemployment and the rule at the state is that if you're, whoever you're laid off from, um, hasn't been there long enough, you know, you weren't at that job long enough to fall under their unemployment, they get to go look up to the prior employer, which is okay, that's problematic, but whatever, that happened. And so this person is collecting unemployment and also collecting their full pension and also doesn't live in the town, so not paying taxes. And that, I, um, I, I'll say, so, I, that seems bananas, so, um, but the state pension or retire, the, whatever, said, yeah, that, that's the rule. And so then remembered that from when I was young and was on unemployment, you used to have to fill out a form, like I predated the, the computer, but it's online now, right? Like, you have to attest to the fact you're applying to X number of jobs. And it feels to me that if I were not paying taxes in the town, had voluntarily left the town such that I was receiving full retirement, that the town was paying and now the town is also paying my unemployment, um, that the town should get to see and vet what job search is going on. And so that's my question.
I will check, but I'm fairly confident in telling you that, that, that we're not, no, no town, no employer is provided with that information who's being assessed. I mean, we've had the situation you're talking about. We've also had, you know, employees who work for us full-time, but they might have a part-time job somewhere else that they were laid off from and, and we've gotten hit with a portion of their unemployment costs, even though we never laid them off. And they continue to work for us and they do good works. Um, it's, I, I hope it's a situation where the state, as they take, catch their breath, um, s- think again about the rules, um, because up until recently, because of the pandemic, you didn't actually have to be attest that you were looking for work. There was a period when you didn't have to do that. They, oh, they have reinstituted, reinstituted that, um, but it's a, what I can tell you from us is that we do actively, very actively through the finance director's office, um, appeal, um, decisions, um, participate in hearings, send information and, and vigorously defend the town's interests because in the, talking about, yes, there was no separation here, um, and I don't even think there was even a, a, a job somewhere else. It was some misunderstandings perhaps, um, but.
Well, that may, but I think, yeah, whatever, however.
It's still peanut butterers us and until the person, maybe if they're, end up having to pay it back, my understanding is we don't receive any funds back until they've paid it all back. And so it could be quite a long time before the town receives something back for its contribution, even though we, we think everything right.
And I, I guess I can, as I say it out, I can intellectualize that you wouldn't necessarily want the people who really are motivated not to have to pay the unemployment to be out double checking whether you've done it, but as a municipality that is already paying one hundred percent of the wage, like this is, we did all of, you're getting, and we got other places that we could put the tax money and now we're also doing the other thing. I feel like that there should, I, I just wonder if, how, if anything, there is that we can, I know that I can't change that law necessarily right away or ever, but about terms of just double checking that, that, that isn't just checking boxes.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
Um, that was, you know, if it needs, that was, that had come up and I had sort of staggered to, all right, I'll say it. My husband had been like, what? And he was like, yeah, and I was like, that's ridiculous.
And, and the number of false claims of people, you know, who work for us and never file anything but were victims of, of, um, um, you know, stealing identity.
Oh, yeah.
And that sort of thing, that also happened, but I can see our, our staff takes it personally and follows up on everyone.
No, I, this was by no means a, um, indictment on anybody that is.
No, I know that. I just want you to know, we care as much as you do about make sure that, you know, we're only spending.
That the money's here for.
For what it needs to be, not.
For what, right.
Not for what it doesn't.
It feels, um, feels wrong.
It does.
All right. So moving on, thirteen.
We have, uh, item number thirteen, fourteen warrants that need to be. We have, uh, item number thirteen, thirteen warrants that need to be.
I move that the board approve thirteen warrants for the period of June fifteenth through July thirteen, twenty-one is printed on the agenda for this meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fourteen.
I also move that the board approve the minutes of the fifteenth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have anything, Blithe?
She's not.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we are done. Is there any way I can stop this? Am I allowed to?